All right, mute is off.
No, well, maybe when I lived in Boston.
Wow.
Yeah, that's frequent, especially more of the drunk people.
Especially fun.
Getting drunk at night.
All right, everybody, it is six o'clock and I'm going to call this regular Berry City Council meeting to order this Tuesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM. Council presidents tonight include Council, Council Buden, Council Deering, Council Shawn Bell, Council Wazza, Council Stockwell, and Council Lozon, and I'm Mayor Hemmerich, joined by City Manager Sterling Castro and Clerk Treasurer Dawes. Tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. Welcome, everybody, who's joining us both online and in the room tonight. For those of you joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. We offer online access as a convenience and we'll continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Please stay muted unless you would like to be recognized to speak, in which case you can raise your online hand or hand in the room and introduce yourself. If you're here in the room, I'll ask that you speak into the microphone at the front table, so you'll need to come forward. I'll call on speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if we need to do the city's business. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we'll get it sorted. And thanks to everyone in advance for participating in a civil way. With that, we're opening this council meeting with an executive session on real estate, which we expected to start at 6:15, which obviously we're a little...
To resume, no, resume public session to resume at 6:15.
Oh, public, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Public session to resume at 6:15, so a short executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Findings.
Yeah, for findings on real estate?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Are we inviting the manager and Stephanie, I assume?
Yes, and Carol.
And Carol, you always tell me no.
I know.
Inviting Stephanie, the manager, and Carol. Forced into it.
This is unrelated to a board of abatement, this, this, this session. Okay, got it, all right. So with those people noted, if there's any further, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion carries. So that means we need to kick you out temporarily, so sorry about that, so.
Pete, Teddy. I'm putting my fancy...
The official.
The official.
They've got like...
They've got Velcro.
Oh, wow, even better.
Reusable. It's the best way to do it. Velcro and lamination.
A training number.
Yeah. And tape costs.
I cannot believe we're not getting any executive sessions.
Thanks, Tony.
I move to come out of executive.
Let's let the people in first, just so we're.
Okay.
At least have the door open, so it's.
Okay, go ahead, Sam.
I move to come out of executive session.
Second.
There's a motion to exit executive session in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, as have it, we are back in regular session. Welcome back, everybody.
We were way off on our 15 minutes, we're sorry.
But not surprising.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, let me make sure, yeah. Yes, thank you, Mayor. We, after getting some more legal advice, we are going to, I'm going to request to remove item nine C four, which is the first reading of the amending the substantial improvement definition. Thank you, Mayor, you flagged this for me. This does have to start at the planning commission. So we checked on the statutory authority and we will start there. Janet has, as you can see, the change has already been drafted, so Janet will be taking that directly to the planning commission. But based on how these flood hazard regulations were implemented, the changes do have to originate there. So thank you for liking that.
Well, I'm bummed that we can't push it through, but I also know that if an ordinance is challenged.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay. I mean, the rules are the rules, so I'm happy to, council would like me to, I'm happy to brief the planning commission. It'll have to originate there, they'll have to deal with it. And FYI, that cannot be retroactive. It needs to be, it cannot go into effect. Unfortunate, but that's the way it is.
I think it's a very good spot. If council goes on, support it 100%. I doubt any counselor has any objection to that, which would help homeowners. So, and hopefully the planning commission can move that through quickly.
And may I add one? Under, just general, under ordinance changes, excuse me, charter changes, just like to present to the council making the treasurer an appointed position.
Oh, that's in there.
That's, that language is in there.
Oh, that is in there.
Yep. I don't know.
Awesome. Oh, it's item D. Thank you.
Carol's always two steps ahead.
As usual. That's, yeah, per for the course.
Counselor, are there any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to visitors and communications. This is an opportunity to speak to an item that is not on the agenda. If you're here to speak to an item that is on the agenda, just raise your hand when we take up that item of business. Erica Rill.
Thank you, and good evening. So I'm here as talking for, as the chair of the Berry homelessness task force. I sent a letter asking for a discussion for portlets to be discussed at this evening's council. And it was sent back with some items from the city manager for the, for the task force to answer before this meeting. We felt we did not get ample time to go back to the task force and ask, answer all of those questions. We were simply asking for a discussion at this meeting to have six portlets in the city of Berry. So I am just wondering why we gave fair warning for a discussion to happen, why this wasn't on the agenda for tonight, and if we could have the discussion happen at a future council meeting.
I think, as I understand, I think the manager intends that we have the discussion tonight following the budget presentation.
If I may, Mayor, actually what I, what I shared with Erica was that this should be discussed in the context of the budget, and we are discussing the FY25 proposed budget tonight, and there is a slide talking about the task force's request. So it's not on there as a standalone item, but it is on there for council consideration.
Was the task force request in FY24 or FY25 request?
24 request, because we are having complaints coming to the task force and individually four people basically defecating in the streets of Berry. And that's coming from businesses, community members, and visitors to the city of Berry. So I apologize that, you know, if this is coming crudely, but it was not really, it was brought to us that we had a plethora of questions brought back to us with no time to really answer them. So thank you.
Well, if, if there's no objection, I do feel like maybe within the context of, or following the budget discussion for FY25, just having a short discussion about FY24, certainly the landscape of homelessness seems to be changing daily, and, and the number of restrooms that are publicly available, including in this public building, are very limited. So perhaps we can just discuss what, what might be the needs for right now as you observe them while a couple of you are here. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. Are there other items for visitors and communication? Yeah, Adam Jacobs.
Okay. How are you all doing?
Great.
My name's Adam Jacobs, and this time I'll be speaking on behalf of the Rainbow Bridge Community Center and our petition drive effort. Since the beginning of last year, we have been collecting signatures to get a $3,000 funding request on the town meeting ballot. The floods slowed down these efforts as we endeavor to commit our resources to residential support. The petition gathering has moved back into full swing as we have pivoted back to some of our original programming and have taken a look at our financials. With one week to go, we still have 200 more signatures to go, and have continued to rely on the support of our community, businesses, churches, community volunteers, friends and family have all helped the effort. It has come to our attention, however, that because of the town hall meeting change that was decided on in the January 16th city council, around 150 of our signatures would no longer count because they were gathered under the originally correct date. I understand that several candidates for office have been asked to regather their 30 signatures so that they can run for office. I'm asking for the city council to recognize the significantly higher burden that 150 signatures entails. We have tried to gather what would now be 750 signatures to make up for the difference. We have gone out every weekend to support events, polling places, wrangled volunteers, social media, businesses, local churches, and various organizations, and we still have 200 more we need with one weekend left to go. I am asking that this council make an exception to allow the 150 original signatures to be counted when we turn in our final forms on April 1st. The council has made exceptions in the past for the Washington County Mental Health, People's Health and Wellness, good beginnings to allow them on the ballot. This time is actually different. We are not asking for an exception to be put on the ballot. We are asking for an exception to, an exception to allow the original signatures to count so that we can continue the process to be put on the ballot.
You had me a little.
We care deeply about this city.
I think that's fair, Carol. I mean, to allow.
And actually, I spoke with, with Adam about it. Sorry to interrupt you, Adam.
Oh, great.
There, there was precedent. We had a similar situation probably six, eight years ago when Project Independence was collecting signatures for placement of a ballot question to extend their tax exempt status. And there was an error in the language that they had used on their petition. But the council accepted the petitions in the spirit in which the signatures were collected and moved forward with, with placing. The correct number of signatures were collected, and it was placed on the ballot. So that's what I suggested.
Not on the agenda, we'll have to ratify it next week. The only thing you have to watch out of is duplicates.
Yes.
Because that'll throw you off a little bit.
Isn't it just a clerk decision?
It's, it's not a clerk decision to accept. No, I have to be within the, the statutory requirements, and the petition language has to be correct.
And council can ignore this?
Council, council can accept and place on the ballot anything it wants.
Okay.
Second though.
As I understand the ask, you're simply saying, so 750 are required?
Six, just over 600 is what is currently required. What he's saying is they would have to replace.
We'll round to 600, just to make the math easy.
Thanks.
If 600 are required, you're going to come and you're going to see Carol with 450 signatures. Carol is going to say, oh, you didn't quite get, quite get to 600. You're going to say, well, here's the other 150 we got the first time.
Yes.
And then you're going to come to the council meeting, and I'm going to support you, and I'm sure others on the council will as well.
Okay. So you want me to come back when it's on the agenda?
Well, you kind of have to for the ask.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, 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 thank you. That's it then. Great. Okay, so I will be coming back after the April 1st deadline then, and that's okay?
Yeah, because what we'll do is I'll, I'll confirm everything, and council will ratify their decision from tonight.
You don't have to come back, like physically, Adam. The clerk can present it to the council.
There's no legal requirement for you to physically.
Wonderful. I really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Are there any other items for visitors and communications?
We do have a, a motion in a second.
Oh, yeah, there's a, well, I thought we were bringing it back.
Well, we'll bring it back to ratify because it hasn't been warned.
Okay. So there's a motion, a second. Can you restate the motion for, the body?
Yeah, to, to accept the 150 plus or minus signatures. To, to accept the 150 plus or minus signatures that were collected on petitions with the previous town meeting date.
All right. That's the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you guys have it. Motion carries. That takes us to, well, are there any other items for visitors and communications? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda. We have approval of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, March 9th, 2024. We have the approval of the city warrants from the week of March 27th, 2024. We have some off licenses and permits.
Yep. I've got a couple entertainment licenses. One is from the rehab gym for May 18th. This is a repeat of an event that they held last year. It's kind of an outdoor event. It's a deadlifting competition and a DJ, food vendors, art vendors, booths, various and sundry things. It's in the City Place parking lot, which is actually owned by the state. It won't take place on any city facilities or property. It does have the various approvals from the other departments that are required to approve it. So there's that one. And then there's an entertainment license. And I'm not sure, you didn't put a name for the organization. Berry Pride, yeah. And I wasn't sure whether it was, is it Berry Pride Baked With Love or is it just Berry Pride and?
Berry Pride Baked With Love.
Okay, so Berry Pride is scheduled for their annual events, bigger and better, this year on June 8th. They're going to be in City Hall Park and it also is going to include closing down Church Street to allow them to have food trucks and various and sundry activities in the park. Again, has all the sundry department approvals and organization and, and support, especially regarding closing the street. There will be some costs incurred for that and they, they, we've figured all those out. So they will be taken care of by the applicant. So both of those are included in the consent agenda unless a counselor wants to pull them out for individual action.
No, a counselor doesn't, but she just wants to ask a question. So the churches are okay with you closing off the street? Whichever.
Sorry, either one of us can answer that question, but we, we have talked to all of the churches and we've planned it out with all of them. They are excited to have this happening and they actually want to be a part of that day with us. We've even talked to Heading Church, which is actually on Washington Street, and they want to be a part of it. We've talked to the library and they're excited to have this, the church, the, the Church Street closed so they can actually extend festivities. And we've talked to the bike shop, who's been a part of this over the years. And they're excited because they can actually extend a bike ride to having the, the Church Street close as well. So I think, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other licenses and permits?
Nope.
Okay. Then we have approval of the 2024 coin drop schedule, which was included in the packet and authorization of the manager to execute two contracts, one with Wright and Pierce and for wastewater treatment plant work and another with the Alliance Group Services for HVAC here.
At City Hall.
In City Hall. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, we got lots. I'll give the, I'll give the motion to, I think I heard Counselor Deering.
No.
No, it was Counselor Chambel and the second, the Counselor Lozon. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to ask the city manager one question. I read the contract and select 40 manholes to, to examine. Do you do that? Is it random or do you look at problem manholes? I mean, how do you?
That's a question for Brian, who's not here today, but I will gladly send that around to the council.
I'll add a question. Can we nominate manholes?
We will accept, we will, we will accept nominations.
Okay. Thank you. I'll get you the answer from, from Brian.
Thanks.
There's a Hollywood star.
That could be a way to build more love for our stormwater system is you, you know, adopt and name a manhole.
What a great idea.
The Grouch. All right.
That's how we pay for the port.
All right. So there's a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you guys have it. The motion carries. That takes us to our city clerk and treasurer report.
A couple things, a reminder that water and sewer bills are due by Monday because the, the 30th of March, or 31st of March falls, 31st of March. In my head, I'm like 30 days, that's, 31st of March falls on a weekend. So the due date is extended to Monday, which is the first. And so stop by the office, whatever. We do have a small batch of eclipse glasses that we are giving out. We're limiting people to four per family and they're gone when they're gone. So if you're coming in to pay your water and sewer bill or license your dog, because they're, they have to be licensed by the first also, you know, you can ask for some eclipse glasses. And then just the last thing, we are, there is information on the city website, on the election page about the May 14th elections, about the offices that are up for election. There are copies of the nominating petitions and consent of candidate forums available. So people should feel free to avail themselves of those. The deadline for nominating petitions is after the eclipse, the same date, the 8th, but it's five o'clock that afternoon. So I will be running outside long enough to look at the eclipse and then coming back in.
Are there any questions? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our liquor and cannabis control board. We have an application.
Yep, we do have an application for cannabis. It's for Terrapin Gardens LLC. It's an indoor cultivator tier one small cultivator license. And I'm not sure whether I had invited them to attend. And I don't know whether they were, they were hoping to be able to make it. Cheryl, is Cheryl here?
We're here.
Yep.
There you go.
Yay. Made it.
Perfect. So that, that is Cheryl and Brian, who are the proprietors. I will say, we, we cannot share their location publicly, which makes sense with a cultivator. That, that location is protected. But we do invite, we like to invite new license holders in to, to introduce themselves. And we like to welcome new businesses to the community. So I throw the floor to you.
Yeah, it's going to be a, you know, small scale, home-based business. You know, just trying to keep it small and make a little money and, you know, hopefully at some point, you know. Yeah, you know, get, get back to the community and, yeah. It's, you know, just seems like a good opportunity.
Are there questions for the applicant?
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? One, one question I did have, the cultivation will be indoor, right?
Indoor, yeah.
Okay. And, and are you anticipating taking any measures to mitigate any odors or odor trespass into the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've looked into it. I'm hopeful no one will even notice. That's, that's, you know, but, you know, there are certain measures I can take if, if, you know, that probably any problems do arise.
And are there certain requirements that you have to meet through the state licensing process as a home cultivator that are different or more relaxed than, do you know, than, than say a commercial cultivator? I'm just not very familiar with the.
It's, it's, I am a commercial, I mean, I am, it is commercial, so it's, it's all the same. So we go through, go through the steps, just like any, you know, you know, some huge, large, you know, tier two, tier three. Jump through all the same hoops.
Okay.
Have all the same, you know, process and security and all that.
Thank you. All right, there's, oh, Counselor Booton.
Just a comment. My abstention is nothing personal. I do it to everybody.
There's a motion in a second. All those, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you guys have it. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it takes us to, and there's no liquor items, right?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. So that takes us to our city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. And Counselor Stockwell, Brian is checking his phone and he said that the manholes have not been selected. They're probably going to look at clusters. They're reviewing the current CCTV coverage and they'll supplement as needed. But if anyone has a nomination, I will accept them and we'll do our best to get them in. So I, I have just a couple items. Just want to remind property owners, we're really approaching the, the deadline for getting the assessors into your home for reassessment. So if you were in the special flood hazard area, you got a letter. This, if you get an assess, a reassessment done, it'll adjust your tax, your taxes for the following year. So if you're interested, encourage you to contact the assessors to schedule an inspection, 802-476-0244 or assessor@berrycity.org. We're gonna open up the, we have a ribbon cutting plan for the BOR turf. We're very excited about this new year-round use of this facility. That'll be Saturday, April 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So we encourage members of the community to come and be among the first to check out the new turf. We're going to have some game stations set up and five lucky raffle winners will get one free hour rental. Encourage you. And again, want to thank BYSA and the town of Berry. This would not have been possible. This is a really good example of an organization and two municipalities coming together for doing a really good thing for the region. And so this would not, this is not a Berry City initiative. This is a, a joint initiative and want to thank our partners because otherwise we wouldn't be talking about it. Winter parking ban will be ending by the, by the next time the council meets. So just a reminder that that ends on midnight, a minute after midnight on April 1st. And along those notes, I want to note that we are really excited about rolling out a city-specific notification system. This, it's going to start rolling out this summer. And we really, we're hoping that this will help us end the parking ban as it is today. We know that that's a really blunt instrument for something that could be, have a more delicate nuanced response. So we will be rolling this out. This will be, residents will be able to get specific updates on their phones via an application and email for, because of cost reasons, for limited residents who don't have phones or aren't comfortable with phones, we can do landline and, and cell phone calls as well. We're going to try to keep those to only the people who really need it. But for most everyone else who knows how to use one of these, you'll just get an update, just like you get on any other applications. And this will be very specific, coming from, you know, myself and, well, Carol says she won't be here. But it'll be coming messages just from, from, from the city itself. And in addition to doing, to helping us hopefully end the parking ban, we'll be able to do other specific messages, boil water notices, God forbid, main breaks. You know, the things we, we hate to have to notify about, but now we'll be able to get people more directly. So very excited about that. Just, you know, encourage residents to be on the lookout for the rollout. Like I said, that'll be this summer when the contract goes into effect. And we're really excited about all the possibilities that it has for us to connect with, with our residents. We are advocating at the Capitol for elevations money, which the mayor mentioned. We've requested 1.5 million to elevate up to 10 structures. Sorry, but as we've discussed and it was in the press last week anyway. So just when, you know, we're hoping that this goes into the final budget. And, you know, we, we're making a case to the legislature that this is a really cost-effective way to save some homes. A new construction costs 500,000 and we can save 10 structures at a fraction of that, that, that would be helpful. And then just finally, the Easter egg hunt is Saturday, March 30th, at Rotary Park at 10:00 a.m. sharp. This is technically the 37th annual egg hunt, even though there were a couple missed during egg hunt. We're still going to count them all. And then I just, if I can, I want to share something. The council will indulge me. So this was the, this was the first Easter egg hunt flyer. And the reason I share is because this was the first one Stephanie did and Saturday will be her last. She is leaving us. So, yeah, it's tough.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about it yet like this. So Stephanie's retiring, so Saturday will be her last day and it's a full circle. She's coming, she started with an egg hunt. She's ending on the day of the egg hunt. She also, her first playground was Garfield and as you know, we're replacing Garfield this spring. So it's really kind of a full circle thing for Stephanie. So we're going to be really sad to see her go. She's done so many great things for so many kids and young people here in Berry. And I wish I was done, but Jeff Bergeron is also retiring. And so we're missing two really great people, two great employees. Jeff has a lifetime of service to the city. He sat, he was a city counselor. He was a planning commissioner. Now has been director of buildings and community services for 17 years. As you all know, Jeff is a North End native and it's hard to go anywhere without him knowing someone from the old neighborhood. And boy, everyone that I've met from there certainly has things to say about him. But Jeff, Jeff cares deeply about his hometown and he has served Berry very, very well. They were, they will both be sorely, sorely missed. We really look forward to honoring them at a, at a future meeting and also at a, you know, some sort of event outside of work so that we can all properly thank them for their service. So we're going to plan then for late, plan that for later this spring. But just two great people who just dedicated service to the city and its residents. Stephanie for 37 years, Jeff for 17 years. And so we will greatly missed. We know we have big shoes to fill. Dawn and I have spent a lot of time learning about cemeteries this week, one of the things that Jeff does. And so anyway, just, you know, two great people. They're not here tonight because this, but we are looking forward to honoring them. I think they were both going to get probably as emotional as we're getting. But we will, they've, I guess my last order would, to them will be that they have to show up to a council meeting to be recognized. And we'll be looking to also recognize them outside of work as well, so we can celebrate all the great things they did for, for Berry. So.
Is Jeff also wrapping up on Saturday?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
So that's it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Other questions? I had one question related to letters that went out about the visual inspection of the pipe that's coming into people's homes. I got one of them. I assume they were, went out citywide.
Yeah.
And, and that's just something where people look at the intake pipe and then they report back to the engineering consulting group.
Correct.
If, if people were wondering, like, if they could get their water tested, would that be anything? Would that money be used at all? Like if they still might be suspect that there might be elevated lead levels through the Department of Health or through this contract?
Yeah, I'll talk with Brian. That's being, so the, we approved a contract to work with, with a contractor to help us do this inventory. I'll check with Brian and I can provide an update to the council next week about options for, for getting water testing if they suspect, if they suspect that. I, I got the letter myself and I, I thought it was really well done, easy to follow. But I will, that's a great question. I'll, I'll have an update for council next week.
Are there any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our first item, a new business, which is a supplemental environmental project proposal. And we have Michelle Brown, right? Yeah, yeah.
And Kathy Jameson.
And Kathy Jameson. Always good to see you, Kathy.
Thank you. So I'll start. I'm Kathy Jameson. I'm an active member of the Berry City River Access Task Force. You are used to seeing Danielle report on the task force, but she is out of state this week. So lucky you, you get me. But seriously though, the, the task force is here tonight to propose a supplemental environmental project. And you might recall the city engagement assurance of discontinuance with the Department of Environmental Conservation. And as part of that document, there was the option to have the SEP. And my understanding for SEP is the city cannot pay itself to do an SEP. So the Berry City River Access Task Force has reached out and partnered with the Friends of Winuski. And so I'm going to turn it over to Michelle to explain. And we, you know, collaboratively developed this proposed SEP. But I'll let Michelle explain it and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Hi. So I think everybody had this in your packets. So we are just proposing four tasks under here, but two of them are really labor intensive is why it adds up. One task is to update the city's infrastructure maps. Not all of the city's. Not all of the city's stormwater system pieces are digital. Some of them are still just on paper. So we're gonna update those maps. And then the next is to complete the illicit discharge detection and elimination work that has been going on for 15 years or more now. So Stone Environmental is the contractor that has been working on that all along. So we would continue to, to work with them to resolve some of the illicit discharges that are still sort of mystery discharges that have to get tracked up through the system to find out where they're originating. That's a big, a big piece of work. And they would also assess any remaining storm drains that weren't previously assessed and reassess the storm drains in the commercial area. Then we would conduct citywide E. coli monitoring. And that is a priority of the River Access Task Force. Because the, the river tested positive for E. coli, the Stevens Branch, at some point in time. And so the entire length of the Stevens Branch within city boundaries is listed as impaired for E. coli. But we don't really know how much of it actually has high levels of E. coli. Probably down, right downtown, it probably does. But, you know, closer to the north end, south end, south end of town, it, it may not be impaired. So that's also really labor-intensive to get a lot of stream miles covered and narrow, narrow, narrow. So we have to go back a few times to, to, you know, really identify where the, where the potential problems are. And then the fourth task is to contract with the rural, Vermont Rural Water Association to do some training with the wastewater staff to make sure that we aren't leaking from the wastewater system. And Berry, you know, unlike some towns in the watershed, has no combined sewer system and no combined sewer overflows. So if the plant and system are managed well, there shouldn't be wastewater leaking into the river. And that, the amount that the city has to contribute to the supplemental environmental project is 47,812.50. And this sort of package of work that we're proposing comes to a total of 65,320, which means the Friends of the Winuski will be raising an additional 17,500 to, to go along with the SEP so that we can accomplish all of these tasks.
And the benefit of having a SEP, rather than just paying a general penalty, is that that money stays locally and it's getting something done environmentally here, rather than just money going into the state general fund. And by partnering with the Friends of Winuski, they're bringing additional funds to the project.
I would say that the rules on SEPs are that they can't benefit the violator, which in this case is the city. So it can't benefit the city, but I think it can benefit the community. Little nuance there.
Sounds like a real win-win. Are there questions, Councilor Stockwell?
I thought there'd be a little overlap between tasks 2A and the wastewater treatment facility research study. Is that, would that be a concern? So the, the timing probably will not be an issue, but what do you think, city manager?
On task, sorry, 2A?
2A of the, of the SEP and the contract for the wastewater treatment facility, there'd be some overlap between tasks there. I mean.
It's possible, but it's certainly possible, but the, I think the rate, the rate of, this will be, I think probably move faster than that work, is my sense.
I think this is, sounds like a great project. I think it'd be really beneficial to the city, community. Thank you.
For the E. coli, is that upstream of the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
And would that be caused by like one failed septic system, or what would typically be a contributing factor to E. coli presence?
So there can be a lot of different factors. And one is the, the illicit discharges where you could have things could be cross-plumbed, like, you know, the wrong pipes connected to each other.
From our own stormwater system.
From your, from your, the wastewater system could be incorrectly tied into the stormwater system. Like in, sometimes we find, you know, I can think of two examples in Montpelier of commercial buildings that had a bathroom that was installed later. And, you know, with the complex utilities underneath the building, whoever installed the bathroom just plumbed it for the wrong outlet, you know, outlet line. And that was going directly to the river. So it's, and, or it can be a leak. If the wastewater pipe is, has a break in it and is leaking, that can then make its way to the river. But also it's wastewater. It's, I'm sorry, people not cleaning up after their dogs is a significant source of E. coli. In, in Montpelier, we found a huge colony of pigeons that were roosting under a bridge. And it was just such a concentrated, large population of pigeons that we think they were contributing to a high E. coli level there. So it, it can be a lot of different factors.
For Nick, you know, are you, would it be your recommendation that we use sewer enterprise funds? I'm just thinking we've done a lot of stuff over the past few years to right-size those funds in terms of money available.
I believe we're obligated to, yeah.
It has to be.
It has to be, yeah.
Okay, well.
We'd rather not, but we'd have, yeah, we have to.
So are we going to dig ourselves a significant hole in the sewer enterprise fund?
It's already dug.
All right.
Yeah, no, I, I.
What's another half inch?
Yeah, I, I think we would, we, we would, there's a lot of things, like, you know, I can't, I, so many times I asked Don about other resources for sewer enterprise, just because it's such an issue. But in this particular case, it's, it's an obligation to use it, yeah. But on, on the other hand, this would have been, this AOD was better than the potential penalty we were facing. And I'd much rather spend it here. If we have to spend sewer enterprise, I'd much rather spend it with this great proposal than send it to the state.
So, Derek?
Just wanted to say, really thank you for this opportunity. That, it also gives us the opportunity to get our community back into the water. I know that it's something that we've talked about, and, you know, if we can identify if there's E. coli or not, or where it is, or what's going on, good job. Like it really, you know, hits on a lot of points for people. So thank you for bringing that.
Yeah, we're excited about that as well. Especially, you know, in the northern part of the city, if we can find a whole reach that's southern, southern. So the process moving forward, if you are in favor of this, would be to, you know, if the, the city is supportive of this, is to, the city would need to submit this to the Department of Environmental Conservation, because they would need to review and approve it as an approved SEP. And then once the Department of Environmental Conservation approves it, then the city would need to cut the check.
So you're looking for a motion that the council support and approve the SEP as presented in the packet?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second.
Yep.
Any further discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Guys have it. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy and Michelle.
I hope.
Thank you for all your work.
The E. coli proves it too.
For the watershed. So it takes us to our FY '25 budget update. Followed by just a discussion of immediate, potential immediate needs for public restrooms.
Thank you, Mayor. And Don's joining me here to answer any questions. There's a presentation in the packet that I'll be running through. These are, waiting for the screens to catch up here in the room. These are slides you've seen, but it's always good to have a reminder that how much of our budget is fixed. And we've actually updated this to be even more nuanced on the non-wages and benefits wedge. So about six, two-thirds of the budgets, wages and benefits, which are, besides the handful of non-union staff, they're all otherwise fixed by union contracts. And then we have, of the non-personnel expenses, really 21% of those are what I would consider fixed, right? So those are things like debt service, things like insurance, things like vehicle heating fuel, sand salt, you know, paying for a website and email. Right? Those are things that I guess we could do without, but not, not really function well without. And so we have very little say in, in what those costs end up being. And then that small wedge right at the top ends up being sort of the discretionary spending, where we have a little bit more room to maneuver. And then this is a similar slide and also, you know, ties our hands a little bit. And this, this just says where the, you know, the first slide was where the expenses are. This says where the money's coming from. And that big blue wedge is property taxes and pilots, representing almost three-quarters of it. The next piece is city-generated revenue. That's for mainly civic center fees and permits, fines, all those kinds of revenues. And then that small share, smaller share, which is now much bigger than it normally is, is federal and state assistance. And so thank you to the state for the, the additional operating funding. That's why that's 8% this year. I put a table here on the side, so you can see the change from year to year. That state assistance we're expecting in '25 bumped that up by 7% as a, as a revenue source for this year. Normally, that federal and state wedge is about 1%. This is just a reminder on the budget conditions we were facing. As we went into this process, we had about 5% contractual wage increases from our collective bargaining agreements, 13% healthcare increased costs. Those are set by the Green Mountain Care Board. We had 497,000 projected expenses. Those are from like contracts that have steps in them. Those kinds of expenses where they're, they're, they're jumping up either due to vehicle consumption or vehicle, vehicle fuel prices, those kinds of things. Those were just built-in costs that we have to account for just from our day-to-day business. And then, of course, we had unfortunately depleted fund balance due to prepaying for flood expenses and the loss of grand list value from the flood as well. So where does the budget stand? So this is the, the then and now. The then was the last time we talked about this, which was right on January 9th, which is when the council, I think wisely decided to, to delay Town Meeting Day. So then we had identified $526,000 in very deep cuts to services. And now 280,000 of, of those cuts, the most painful ones, are restored. Where were we then? That in order to restore the deepest cuts and maintain a fairly predictable projected tax rate increase, we needed external funding assistance. And now very thankfully, $1 million in state funding secured by the legislature that we're eligible for in the Budget Adjustment Act. And then, you know, and back then, following council feedback, we had targeted a 5% tax increase to allow for the restorations of those cuts, assuming we'd gotten some external funding assistance. And now the budget that you received in the packet is in that range. We're with a projected tax rate increase of 4.85%. So just a very simplistic, so we've restored, the, the big picture is we've restored $280,000 in the deepest of cuts. We've added $1 million in state funding to the budget, and that's where we get to a 4.85% tax rate increase, which is the, the amount reflected in the line-by-line. So some key restorations and investments listed here. We've, initially, we had reduced, eliminated funding for the planner position. We've put that back in. We've done, we heard you loud and clear on cemeteries, did 100% restoration of cemetery seasonal staff. So that's in this budget. Did a full funding of Aldrich Public Library. So this gets them to their budget request. This doesn't get them to flat funding. This is to the library's budget request. And thank, another great partnership with the town, where this budget includes full season use of the, use of the Berry Town Yard Waste Disposal Site. And it include, and it restores the bulk waste removal events, which is very, very popular. So I think things that our residents, we hear from our residents quite a bit, are in this budget and very, very excited about full season use of the Town Yard Waste Disposal Site. I think that's a win-win for, for both communities as well. And then some other changes made since January. So plus $5,000 in expenses, that's in red, because that's just, you know, more money going out the door. But that's the messaging system I mentioned. That's for the regroup contract, which we think's very, like I said, really excited about the potential there for communicating with our residents. We've added $8,000 as an investment to Public Works for an asset management software. So this is, this is beyond a manager plus that we were gonna be looking for a fleet management. This replaces that. We, we never got manager plus off the ground because the flood hit, and so we canceled that. Very excited about this software, which does not just the fleet management, but also infrastructure management. So, which we are, I think, in desperate need of. We're gonna have a lot more information for our crews out on the field. They'll be able to, with tablets, identify work orders and sites and locations. So just a very exciting move for our, bring them really forward into the 21st century. And then we've also adjusted the Police Department overtime budget to reflect actual expenditures. I think we, we were very optimistic that we would see this spending come down. I know the chief has worked very hard to limit unnecessary overtime. Unfortunately, they have five vacancies. And so their second shift in particular is, has a staffing issue which causes mandatory overtime. Until those vacancies are filled, we just, I think we'd be responsible to not assume that these expenses would, would realize. That last one in green is a positive, which is we recognized additional dispatch revenue, which the Police Department is doing dispatch for Randolph, Randolph, forget the other towns, but several other towns. And they have steps in their contracts as well. So we're recognizing that additional revenue here as well. This is the budget request from the Homelessness Task Force. And council, you all received this in an email. But just for, for folks in the, in the public to see this as well, there's an $18,000 request for six accessible portable toilets to be deployed throughout the city on a year-round basis. The funding source is not identified, so assume it would be property taxes at this point, not, not grant funded. And below there are the, the questions that I had sent to the task force about whether this is one-time expense or if it's recurring. So do we have to assume this cost moving forward? The stakeholders that were engaged as this was developed. And just the number of portables, how, how it was determined that six was the appropriate number. Whether they needed to be deployed year-round. I know, for example, that the, the council has wisely also added, in our baseline budget, $6,000 for a wintertime warming space. And unfortunately, the library did not open that this year. But that would be, I think, an alternative to, to wintertime portables, is to have, use the money that we have for a warming shelter, which would include access to, to a restroom. And then I know in the winter, and some of the homeless population also has access to the voucher program. So I just, just an open question whether the six are necessary in the winter. And then just if there was awareness of other communities where it has been done, so we can ask about implementation, any concerns or, or challenges with rolling it out. And I did get an answer to that, that Montpelier has deployed portables and, for broader use, including at Hubbard Park. So I, you know, I, and council knows my opinion from the email chain, but I, I think, in this, in this current form, I, I think this is probably excessive. And so, but that's not my decision to make. This is, you know, certainly for council to weigh in. And that was really the, that was really it. The, I think we were in a good place. The last budget we presented you was assuming around $1 million in external funding, which is why you don't see a lot of changes in what we're showing you tonight. So that state money certainly helped us, I think, come to you with a, a more reasonable product, and we're happy to, to answer your questions about it.
That's what was, Zach?
So just, do you want to talk about this, the portables now? Mr. Mayor, you have it.
Well, I think that maybe there's this FY '25 piece and then FY 20, then an immediate need. I mean, we just heard about E. coli in the river, and I, I can only imagine there's quite a bit of open defecation happening or with encampments along the river. And I know when I walk into any city hall in any community in the United States of America, I would expect that there'd be a publicly available bathroom. I would expect that there'd be a publicly available bathroom, and there isn't one in this building. So I'm wondering, you know, what, what do we need to do to get so that the, the city is operating some public restroom somewhere that's open to the public?
Yes, I would say, you know, I don't know if six is the right number or not, but I certainly think that this is a need that's out there. You know, the, the warming shelter that you brought up, exactly, it didn't open this year. There's, we all want it to open next year, but it might not. And even at that point, it was only for a set amount of hours during the day. I think it was two and a half, three hours that, that space was open. So that's 21 other hours where there's not a bathroom available. Of course, the library is there, but again, only open for certain hours. The lack of accessible public bathrooms in both Berry and Montpelier is not, you know, news. It's the gas station right in downtown in the library. That's pretty much it. So, you know, I, I don't want to say, right now, I don't want to say, yes, we're going to spend $18,000 for six of them spread out randomly throughout the city, but like, it's a need that's there. It's only going to get worse as the legislature, I should say, the, the administration of the legislature continue to unhouse people from the voucher program. And the folks that were exited are still available for the severe cold weather programs, but those are very ad hoc and they get turned on and off. So the, and to the mayor's point, there's not an accessible bathroom here for the public. So I, I think it's a very blatant need in both communities to have accessible public restroom. So my instinct would be to have the manager sit down with the task force and come up with, all right, maybe it's four of them in these four locations for 12 grand or something to that effect. But, you know, when we're talking about restoring $50,000 for police overtime, which I understand those are expenses that tend to incur whether we budget for them or not, with a million dollars in state aid, I, we can find less than 20 grand for some port, let's throw it down.
I mean, particularly until we have a, some city-operated publicly accessible restroom, it seems the only responsible thing for the city to do to offer some place for people who meet their human needs in a dignified way. And, and if we're really going to get 25,000 people here in a few weeks, we should have a hell of a lot of them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we are, the partnership is getting portables for the Eclipse event, for sure.
Would anybody object to Council Wazza's suggestion to have the manager sit down with the task force and come up with a workable solution?
I think that's an excellent idea. And I know that Berry Congregational Church was willing to pay for at least one or two porta potties a couple of years ago, so they might be a source of funding.
The Aldrichs would theoretically be still entitled to the...
Well, the, the funding is not tied to an organization. It's tied to the, the need, the function.
For the six we didn't use, the six we didn't use this fiscal year, because it didn't...
Yeah. Oh, it's, it's available. Yeah, yeah. It's, is it maybe?
Twelve.
Spent what expenses?
Yeah.
Were in the red.
Right.
It hasn't been spent for that purpose. Let's just put it that way. Yeah.
And I saw, Council Stockwell and Dr. Finner.
Is there, can we develop a public restroom downtown?
We, yeah, I mean, I suppose we could, we could look at possibilities. I mean, it, we'd need space and utilities.
I think San Francisco did that, and it didn't work out very well, I recall.
And there's also plenty of communities that have them, and it works out fine, so.
So, I mean, it does require management. So there's a cleaning contract, and then there's electricity, and there could be capital expenses. I mean, but generally, you would expect during normal working hours, at least, you could walk into a public building and take a leak if you need to take a leak. So I think at, at a minimum, we should try to be getting city hall there, I think. And then if there, you know, if we, but perhaps broader to have something that relieves the burden of merchants providing restrooms, that could be a win-win for the small businesses downtown. And certainly there are ways to prove that, like through, pay for that through a Business Improvement District if we wanted to do that. Special Assessment Authority is available to the city for the downtown district, so. But it sounds like there's, there's an, an immediate need. We have potentially $25,000 people coming to the city, and people are being exited from shelter right now, which means that they're going to be finding interstitial spaces throughout the state, including by rivers. And, and, and then, then there's the, maybe mid-moderate term is making sure that public buildings have publicly accessible restrooms and perhaps a longer-term vision to see that if we can find ways to meet broader needs, maybe to relieve some of the merchants of having to provide restroom access.
Just seems like a humane and proactive thing to do.
I mean, I just want to sort of separate the Eclipse event from like the day-to-day. The partnership is hosting the Eclipse party. The partnership is getting portable, so we're not expecting all these people who may show up to just be looking for a place to go. That's, Tracy's doing great planning akin to what she does for the Heritage Festival. I mean, the other thing, just to know, I, I'm not aware of anybody who's been turned away from using the bathroom in City Hall ever, who's come in to use it. So I think that the notion that the bathrooms here are not accessible is just, that, that would be news to me. I think it'd be...
So you have a disability, you can get to the entry?
You can get to the Berry Up Room, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's accessible, fully accessible.
Oh, okay, good. That is...
Yeah, so I, I think there's a difference between City Hall becoming a warming shelter where people are congregating, where people are working. We have, you know, staff who are separated in different hallways and records and things like that. But if someone has been turned away from City Hall's bathroom, I'd love to know because that's just not my experience, so.
I, I would say I had no idea that there was an accessible bathroom available. So I've only, yeah, seen the sign on the door.
Yeah, it's totally accessible. It's the first one.
Not available to the public, so. So then, it's Dr. Finner, you had a question, and I see Council Wazza on, and then I think we probably need to look back at the budget.
Comment that the idea of sitting down with the manager, talk about FY25, I think is a good idea. I'll have to talk, of course, with the chair, Erica Rio. We, our next meeting is a week from tomorrow, and we have to warn on Thursday. So putting an item in discussion with the, with the managers, a good idea. I will say that some of the questions that came back to us were not questions that I thought were appropriate for the task force to have to answer. For example, what is the source of funding? We were submitting it to be funded by normal funding in the city because it's, it's, it's a normal expense. We can certainly look at possible places that would help out or, or something, but that overall net amount we, we suggested were based on figures that the manager gave us. And I've already heard somebody say that, you know, something of the order of 18,000 in terms of the larger budget is not a significant percentage. With respect to the remainder of FY24, because we do have a need now, we might take a look at what the partnership is, is going to have for the Eclipse and where, and perhaps continue some of those at, at city expense for the remainder of the fiscal year. Now, if, and I, I see Council Wazia nodding his head. Now, if that's a realistic possibility, that probably does not have to wait, should not wait for a task force meeting, but an informal body of just a few people working with the manager and the partnership to get that done SAP. The other comment, and it's already been made, I want to emphasize, is that we never know what the situation's going to be with the availability of warming shelters every winter. Two years ago, the library was a warming shelter and provided a, a range of services for the people who used it. This year, they declined because they did not have the staff. And staffing is a very important issue for a warming shelter. And it's not that staffing is that expensive, it's that staffing calls for people who are rather skilled and sensitive to the needs of the population they are working with. And so those are just some comments for things to consider. But I hope the mayor can, I mean, the manager can pencil in Wednesday evening at 6:30, although I understand we also have Representative Williams coming to us. So Erica and I are gonna have to talk quickly in the next 24 hours. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Because I, I'd say we pivot back to the budget and talk about any questions you have for the council, or any feedback council has for the manager.
I'm just thinking about next year. Sorry. I'm looking, nice job. Nice job, Don. Nice job, Nicholas. And I'm already thinking about next year saying, how do you plug a million-dollar hole? We're going to have the same five percent wage increases. That's what we've bargained for under our collective bargaining agreement. We've got to honor that. You know, healthcare, place your bets. Is it going to be 10 or 20 or 30%? So, yeah.
One thing that stuck out to me is the planner position. So we had that in the budget for two years. It's just kind of become flex slash money because what we've done hasn't worked in terms of recruiting somebody after it being in the budget for two years. It looks like we're going to continue on with the same strategy based on the numbers I'm seeing. I question if that strategy's going to work based on the compensation rates I'm seeing and the fact that most planners have graduate degrees and big student loans to pay back. And, and not, not denying that we have a need, but I question whether or not that is going to work again.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a great question. I mean, the, you know, we, we didn't have an assessor for many years, and we ended up making, you know, making an assessor hire based on what the market was requiring. And, and I think we've, we've been very happy with that decision. There's Larry right there. You know, we can, you know, I, I think the challenge is...
Although we did up them, yeah.
We did. No, that's, and that's where I was going, which is that if, if we want to pay a planner what they're, what they're making, we, that's a decision that if the council wishes to go there, we can add it into the budget. It's...
I'm asking, what's your plan to fill that position based on what you've experienced the past two years? Because if it's going to be the status quo, I would just say yank it out.
So we've, we're, we've been recruiting on, the, indeed has been a recruitment effort. We've started posting them on, on Facebook. We have them, we've, I know we've reached out to the colleges. And you're right, they're not, they're making more money. They're able to work from home. It's a, the great gig if you can get it, and Berry's not, we're, we are not competitive in the market for it. So, you know, if we also increase it, probably be paying more than we pay many of the department has, which is another thing we have to balance out, right? When you're running an organization and you have somebody coming into that position that's earning many people who've been here a long time, which is, not to say we don't do it, but that's something that we have to also manage from a organizational standpoint. So if council, I mean, we, we can, it's, it's a roll of the dice, and we may, we may not find someone. Unfortunately, the, the market is, is tough, and they're able to take the jobs that they want, and oftentimes working from home, which is not what they would be able to do in Berry.
So when you subtract out the benefits from the 91, what do you end up with?
It's like...
Salary rise 50. And so which department heads are earning less than 55?
No, I, I think my point was that if we elevated to what the planners are making in the market, we would probably be going above several department heads. Yeah.
I just, I saw a lot of restoration of like $10,000 lines here and $10,000 lines there. And, and just as a, a matter of priority, I guess my feedback would be it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's budgeted to fill a position. It looks like it's budgeted to leave $90,000, kind of flex money, so. Like we've seen the past two years.
Janet, use another...
I mean, I've, I've talked to Janet about rethinking the position. Does it become a project manager type position to get just somebody in the door who can help her with, with a lot of the, the projects that she's having to juggle? So that might be an option as well, just to not make it officially a planner, but to find her, you know, some help. Yeah, somebody who's, who's got the soft skills that can, you know, take a project and run with a project coordinator, project manager, something to that effect as well.
Might be the better direction.
Yep.
Any other budget questions? Any concerns about the five percent rate?
Okay. I mean, everybody has concerns about increases. I mean, but, you know, we're in a position where we are because it was in the past, right? I mean, the flood kicked us, and unfortunately, that's how much we can do.
It's no fun to cut, I'll tell you that much.
No.
So do you have, when is the council going to start the process for the next year's budget? You know, I'm not, like, yeah, I mean, we, we sat around, we, we, you know, but I think it's important for, for, because I have, and I know we're nerds of the same color, Don. So it, it is so ugly. It is so bad, because I'm trying to predict what is lost, and we're going to lose grand list. There are going to be additional abatements. We'll likely carry a deficit for this fiscal year into, it's bad. It's scary. So that's why just soon I understand what you're saying there. I don't necessarily disagree, but I'd love to keep that money in the budget because I think we're going to need it for the position, whether we fill the position or not. It's going to be tough. So, yeah, I mean, I think we, we set that, we set the bar at five percent. We all said, hey, we can live, you know, with apologies to our taxpayers and to the folks who struggle, and folks out there are struggling, so with apologies to them, considering what the city had been through in '23, we figured that five percent was a reasonable, felt like a reasonable number. And so you did that. So thank you, and now we got to get to work.
I see Steve McKenzie, if you can come to the microphone.
What did you ever say?
What's that?
Just a couple of quick comments. One, one thing you can be sure of, if you don't leave it in the budget, you'll never fill a position. And the position is one that eventually needs to be filled. So my recommendation is to leave that in. Secondly, the, what I found over time, and I think what Nicholas is finding, your ability to fill positions at any given time is a function of what the market is at the time. And by market, I don't mean dollars. I mean people, availability, people make moves and so on. So if you don't have that money set aside, you won't be able to take advantage of an opportunity that you can't see now, but it may come. So just move.
This is, this is available on the webpage, don't it?
It is, yeah. It's in the packet, yeah.
And thank you for putting the lead sheet in there in the budget. I appreciate it.
So we can come back next week, we have, we're meeting next week on, as well. And it has to be warned on April 11th. So we'll have another crack at any questions or issues next week as well.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then we have some follow-up items from the housing meeting. So the first one is a suggestion to create a $250,000 ARPA-funded Housing Trust Fund. This was an idea adopted in our housing strategy back in, in January. We have $1.8 million in unspent ARPA funds. This is, would be a, a small down payment on, on helping rebuild the grand list. And the thought is, is that we commit the funding now, but ask the housing task force if they would be open to making recommendations on how the, the trust fund would be set up governance-wise, its potential uses, and opportunities for sustained revenue sources over time. Council Wazza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I talked to, I briefly talked to the mayor and the manager about this idea as well. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity, and we heard a lot...
and opportunities for sustained revenue sources over time. Council was.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I talked to, I briefly talked to the mayor and the manager about this idea as well. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity and we heard a lot of willingness last week from Downstreet, who is familiar with structures like these in other communities. And they seem to be a willing partner. But, you know, in reflection of the fact that everything costs way too much and we do have a large outstanding balance of ARPA money that we have to commit by the end of this year, I would encourage the council to increase the down payment, for lack of a better term, in the trust fund to four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars worth of ARPA money. Talking to the manager, we still had two hundred and something in the community projects.
Yeah, the innovation projects.
Yeah, so we had, we did the community innovation project process where we asked folks to come in, present their ideas, and the council set aside around two hundred thousand dollars to fund those projects. And, you know, I think we can, I was a very big proponent of those projects, a big cheerleader for that process. But, you know, we all know that the situation the city's in has just exponentially changed since we started that project. So what I'd like to do is take that two hundred and combine it with the two hundred and fifty that's already accounted for in the memo. That gets us to four hundred and fifty. And then why not just round it up to half a million, but it'd also be fine with two hundred and fifty. So that was my idea, just to give, you know, Council Lozón, you said the most expensive thing right now is just getting projects off the ground, building, getting stuff. And so the more money that we can put into a fund like this, it's just gonna go even further. So that would be my recommendation here.
I think it's an excellent, an excellent suggestion. It will enable us to do a number, you know, even if we use Downstreet, we could just say, here's what we'd like the money to go for. We'd like it for ADUs, we'd like it for infill, you know, we'd like it for workforce housing development. All those things would attack, attract and retain young families, which is what we desperately need. So it just seems like this would be a big win for Barry.
Council Lozón.
Not saying no, Teddy, but I'm saying no right now. We could declare the money spent. We could put the community, put all of the ARPA money into some sort of community fund. And then we could look at what our options are and kind of let our future unfold a little bit. You know, we're already looking at a million dollar deficit in the next fiscal year. And I think with, so, like I said, I'm not saying no, but I don't even know what the need is. It would almost seem to make more sense to me to ask people, well, what do you have? For the council to consider the funds spent, which puts them in the general fund, move them out of the general fund so that we're, Allah, what you always do to me at the end of the year, so that we don't have to use it to reduce the subsequent tax rate. But then, like I said, let our future unfold a little bit before we go committing four hundred and fifty or even two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we may really wish we had back nine months from now.
If I could follow up, I think that's a fair enough point. And, you know, I think that the fact remains that the only thing that's going to dig us out of the post-flood hole is increases to the grand list. And the only way to do that realistically is to get some developments off the ground. And we need to be providing folks with the tools to do that as quickly as possible. And I see that putting this money in a trust fund like this and instructing that we work with Downstreet to do it seems like we could get this thing stood up pretty quick. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, wait a little bit to see what the situation looks like a year from now. But as you just said, when we're going through the budget thing, it's gonna look shitty a year from now. And the only way we're gonna get out of this is by increasing.
Well, you know, it may not. I mean, we do have, I'm the eternal optimist. And I believe that, you know, there are other tools available. I know the mayor didn't like one of them, which was tax stabilization within this Tiff district. But my proposal was for specific legislative relief that would hold our Tiff district harmless, not decimate the Tiff district. So, you know, we still have the North End project pending. A year from now, we're gonna know likely whether there is a path forward or not. I'm not, we're certainly not gonna turn the North End around in the next, in the next year. But we're certainly gonna have a much more clear path forward. And there could be easily eighty to a hundred units, prospect heights. It's just so, like I said, Teddy, it's not, it's not that I don't like your idea. It's just so much uncertainty right now. I think we have to let people know, look, we're willing to consider anything. And if you have projects and part of that two hundred and fifty or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars could benefit your project and we could get a return to the city, I'd be all for that. There's just a lot going on right now.
Let's put the infrastructure in place so that we can do that. And I think that we've been kicking this idea around. Like, I don't think, this isn't a new idea, you know? We've been talking about this for a very long time. So I don't think that we're gonna know anything life-shattering in the next twelve months that's gonna determine whether or not having a half million dollars available for housing development is a good idea.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that this is about building infrastructure for reinvesting in our housing stock. But it's also, I think, I look at it a little bit as an investment in homeownership. You know, I took advantage of a municipally operated, as I mentioned in a prior meeting, revolving loan fund. It helped step, helped me step into ownership and fix up an old home in a community that, you know, could have lost that opportunity along the way. And when you say there's not, no need, there's a desperate need based on what I hear from constituents. I think about a gentleman in Ward One who went to sell his house and, and prior to closing, they found a defect that would not allow a federally backed mortgage to fund it. And he couldn't afford the repair. Or I think of a duplex owner I know who does not rent out their second unit because they cannot meet the minimum housing standards ordinance of the city of Barry and they do not have the funding to pursue that. Or, or I think of people who might, with the right nudge, subdivide an open lot for a new home with the right kind of incentives. So this is, I think this would be a step to building a new infrastructure for the city to partner and begin reinvesting in a very old housing stock and particularly in homeowners that may not qualify for the conventional support systems to fill those gaps and to make repairs and grow the grand list and bring units back online. And, and so, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand in the grand scheme of themes of the projects like we're talking on the North End is a pretty small start. But I still think it's a significant step in the right direction. We all have all voted and agreed that this is the strategy that we want to run. It's now before this body. And, and the time to get started on this was, you know, the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago. The next best time is today. And today it's before this council, Council Booton.
Yeah. So there's a couple of things. One, it shouldn't be lost on us that doing this is similar to what Council Lozón said, we're giving money in advance. The only difference is that this is money that we currently have. The revolving loan fund, I would feel far more comfortable with BADC or Downstreet maintaining the fund and not city staff doing it. I don't think we have the capacity to do that. And I would not support any type of plan that burdens city staff with that. And I think I'll leave my final comment to whatever Amy's probably gonna say, because I got a feeling. But, yeah.
Also, Shambal.
I'm, I'm good with the initial proposal of two hundred and fifty. I also, I'm a little wary of going further than that right now just because the money is so unpredictable as to what's coming at us in the future. And that, that really, really worries me. I do like your idea, Michael, about putting it, taking it necessarily out of the hands of staff right now and putting it with an organization who does work with that sort of thing. You know, if we can make that kind of a partnership come into being.
In terms of a recommended motion, it was to create a, a request that the Housing Task Force recommend a governance structure and steering committee uses and revenue sources and allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funding to the fund and create, create the fund. So that would be an opportunity, although the proposal was just to create it, the council review how that would work and who would be in charge of it and to participate in the Housing Task Force meetings as well. Counsel, go, well, just talk, get to Amy Gelford and Council Dearing.
Hi, thanks. I just had a couple clarifying questions for you to consider. Would any of the other entities other than the city who would be servicing a revolving loan program, would there be fees for that, like for underwriting, for funds management, that sort of thing? I think you should know that ahead of time.
I think Amy did, or not, I think Angie did say that there is a servicing fee last meeting for the loans that they write, but.
Just something to consider, whatever that is. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not reasonable, but just something to, to know. I think it seems like a, obviously it's something you're proposing to flesh out more, but I think you would want to be clear, is this something where you're giving people money upfront? Or is it reimbursement of expenses based on invoices? Because that's a very different model of running this type of loan program. I said some of my other concerns about it last week, but I'll just say, you know, two months ago, when the capital plan was presented, an item on it caught my eye, which was the North End Stormwater System Upgrade. And I'm just gonna read from that project description. This is a project stemming from the 2011 spring flood and as a sister project to the Granite Street Storm Sewer Project that was successfully completed. The project objective is to relieve chronic flooding due to an existing undersized storm sewer in the area of five fifty-three to five sixty-seven North Main Street. The project estimate is two hundred and ninety-four thousand. And we were told at that meeting that there was not, that the design was done, but that there was not money available to complete the project. And I think that is a project that if the design is done and there's money available, that seems to me to be a project that would directly benefit city infrastructure and another, a number of houses in the North End.
Council was a sec.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, also reiterate that there's also more ARPA money. So just, you know, to Amy's point right there, a project that could come up that we should fund. There is still, as of now, another currently, yeah, I was reading that backwards. So if the city approves the allocation, the two hundred and fifty thousand, there is still approximately a million dollars there in ARPA funding that we have to decide what to do with. So I guess I would make the motion to.
Before you do, I just, Council Dearing wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, so personally, I have some issues trying to allocate two hundred and fifty thousand or even close to half a million dollars when one of the moves, motions here is to request that the Housing Task Force recommend the governance style for a steering committee uses and then revenue sources sustain, to sustain the fund. So with all these unknowns, I have a really hard time trying to support this and kind of even think that maybe some of this information should have been provided in the action memo. So some of us would have had that information to know how this is gonna be done. Because I guess there are a lot of really good questions that need to be decided between how the money is gonna get spent and how the program really operates. So I think that to allocate any dollar value whatsoever without knowing how things are going to be done, to me is foolish.
Counsel, just talk with them, Counsel was a sec.
Identifying a funding stream for future sources of revenue is an important part of this. On the other hand, we've got to do something about housing, especially to making housing available for people who need to buy into housing, for people who want to work here. We have got to do that. And if we let a developer develop, which I think is a great idea, but we also need to encourage small developers and we need to encourage small homeowners and we need to encourage duplexes and ADUs. And we can easily do that with this funding. It's a great avenue for people. And it would give them a chance to own a, own a home. That would be, that's hugely stabilizing for the community, for the family, for the community. It is a great investment. It is also only two hundred and fifty thousand. It is not a fortune. And the other thing is that Downstreet already does this. So we could go to the House, all in Housing Task Force and say.
Further municipalities.
Yeah, yeah. And say, hey, here's what we'd like to, we'd like to target ADUs and infill housing particularly with this money. That's a very clear thing to do, but also we can ask the committee to do that and come back to the council with a proposal.
Can I make a correction that I caught while we're here? There'd be one point six million in ARPA left. There was gonna be one point eight million after last week's, or two weeks ago, investment in the North Main Street Sewer. So I probably added, I took, I probably added two fifty to the seven forty. It was my math mistake, but Don and I have conferred it's one point six. Sorry about that.
Also was a sec.
I would just, to Council Dearing's point, you know, what this does is this says the money is there and the city is in on this. I think that the reason we haven't had, one of the reasons that we haven't gotten to the point where we have all of these details is because the Housing Task Force and Downstreet aren't going to put in, you know, weeks, months of work setting up this organization if the city's not willing to come to the table on this. So I think what this does is say that we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars here that we've put in a housing trust fund. Now let's put the processes in place to make sure that those dollars can be as impactful as possible. So I'm ready to make a motion, but, Mr. Mayor, there's more.
Yeah, I didn't, certainly the motion.
So then I would make the motion to create a housing trust fund to request that the Housing Trust Fund recommend a governance structure for a steering committee uses and revenue sources to sustain the fund in conjunction, is not the word I'm looking for, while working with Downstreet to do those goals and allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funding to the housing trust fund.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Is it a trust fund or a loan fund? I mean, I'm trying to, it's a loan fund, correct? Not a trust fund. Loan fund and the trust fund are two very, very different things.
It could have both functions.
Yeah.
It could do some straightforward grants to people who could not otherwise be, be, have any possible develop, ability for development. And it could also be a revolving loan fund. So it could have both functions.
Although it's, although the name in the motion is a trust fund and I think the trust fund could, could allocate funding to a loan manager is the, I think the model that has been used by other communities like Montpelier sometimes uses their trust fund for down payment assistance. But I think, again, this is about, can we take the first step and then work out the details and adjust as, as we get some recommendations?
Fair enough. I just want to understand what we're voting on because what I heard you say, Teddy, was that council would, would offer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the form of a trust fund, but that trust fund would not be implemented until we hear back from folks?
Yeah, until we have.
So we're basically saying we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we would invest in housing if we see the right proposal. Well, I mean, by that logic, we have one point eight million dollars that we would invest in housing if we heard the right proposal. So, so I'll support you on this, but again, it doesn't mean that, you know, it doesn't mean that I'll support the next vote, but I don't have an issue. I mean, I offered the council four ideas last week that didn't cost anything. So believe me, I'm serious about advancing housing in the city of Barry. So, so I'll support the motion, but I'll be interested in seeing the program.
There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion, Council Booton?
Steve McKenzie wanted to say something.
If you could come to the microphone.
I just want to make sure that Downstreet or BADC is going to be monitoring this fund. That's all I care about and I want to make sure that that's the case. And if they already have a system set up Downstreet, I would like to see what that system is and we don't even have to send it off to the Housing Task Force.
So then I wouldn't, I wouldn't box this in quite yet on who would be overseers because they may be administrators and it may make sense from a governance structure to not have the administrators also have a stewardship board role so that could cause a potential conflict. So that's where I think we need to hear back from the task force on potential recommendations on, on, on how this might work out. Again, this is establishing the fund and then waiting for recommendations on how to, on how, how it could be governed and administered. So there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I just have, the motion carries. So that takes us to another proposal discussed last week was to get a short-term rental ordinance with fee structure in motion. I know there are many dozens. I know there are many dozens of short-term rentals in the city. Because I kind of go on and look every once in a while at Airbnb and Verbo and Visiting Nurses Association. Sometimes it's just five, six that are listed at a time. Sometimes I've seen. Two dozen up on the listing, you know, when you think about a typical. Long-term housing unit, let's say makes a thousand dollars a month rent. That, that, the short-term rentals can make two, three, four, five times that. And I, I know short-term rental operators, not, not in the city, but some who are pulling down. Well, well over a hundred thousand dollars a year on their short-term rentals. These are competing, these rental units are competing with our hotels, our formal ends that are, are regulated as commercial. Enterprises, they pay commercial property tax rates, they, they go through all the, the regulations whereas. Some of these can fly a little bit more under the radar. And I'm not saying that they don't fill a need, certainly they've been, I think, a valuable resource to fill. Housing gaps for short-term workers, whether it be construction workers or, or nurses. But they do have some different types of neighborhood relationship challenges or issues, I should say, not challenges and. Safety things, you know, when you rent a place of public accommodation. You expect that the wiring is done by an electrician and that there are smoke alarms and that it's a safe place. To sleep at night and when you have a licensure program in place. It's a way to, to make sure that those, those pieces come together. In anticipation of some of the, the issues that come up with short-term rentals. The proposed motion, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but oh, it's to look at. Thank you Nicholas. To look at different aspects that often come up in, in short-term rental ordinances that are, that could have a license, annual licensure fee. That could benefit the trust fund established. But they often look at declarations of insurance coverage, performance standards that help keep the peace. Related to light trespass, odors and waste management, outdoor gathering spaces and noise. They often designate an operator of record to address nuisances and complaint reporting procedures. They tend to have some type of certification that operators are following state regulations and that's the Division of Fire Safety. And the Department of Health, as well as our local ordinances. There's typically provisions on timing of licensures and fee collection, just like our vacant housing ordinances. You know, already our landlords are, are going through a similar fee registration process, so it seems like it's only fair. That short-term rental operators do too. They tend to have identification of off-street parking spaces, occupancy limits. Given, to limit the number of people per, it might be per bedroom or per, per bathroom. Advertisement disclosures ahead of time, allowed and disallowed commercial signage. Lowest cost and most effective enforcement provisions for non-compliance and. You know, a short-term rental that's in an owner-occupied multi-unit dwelling is very different. Than a short-term rental that is just a standalone unit without an owner occupant on site and. In, in my view, those are some things that deserve some fee relief. For people. So that's, that's the idea is to get an ordinance drafting in motion. And as a potential revenue source and, and a leveling up for. For our landlords who are already paying a licensure and fee. And, and to help. Understand what this marketplace is doing and what impact it might be having on long-term housing. Counselor Booton.
Yeah, so I checked Airbnb and there's like five listings on there, four of which are Maplecroft. The, the question that I have for this is why wouldn't, I, I, and I didn't look it up and I, it just came to me was the. You know, should it be under just part of the rental registry? Right? If they're renting it out, whether it's. If it's less than 30 days, then it would fall underneath our local options tax. Right? For, for. For room and board and the, the rental units if it's longer. Just that, the difference is a contract of one month versus one year.
To respond to that, this would be an ordinance that only applies for stays less than 30 consecutive days because after 30 consecutive days. Our rental ordinance does go into effect in landlord-tenant law then is triggered.
So then, why wouldn't it fall underneath our rooms, meals and. Rooms.
Well, we don't, we don't control that. That's a relationship between the state and, and I don't know how they.
It's tax fraud.
I don't know how they collect, if they collect rooms tax from short-term rentals.
On Airbnb?
Yeah.
They do. It's part of the, part of the deal if they're using the platform. I mean, there's not that many on there, but I don't. I mean, I'd be interested in, what I'd be interested in is seeing what other municipalities may be doing. As opposed to, you know, blowing right into the, the Barry City Ordinance, I'd like to. You know, if I could just have a little bit of time, take a look at. What other, I don't know if Montpelier is currently regulating, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think anytime that you can get that information, you know, I just looked at Airbnb. I don't usually search Barry, Vermont because I have a place to stay. But, you know, there's, there's a number of them on there and you're right, Michael. A few of them were, you know, Maplecroft. Advertising on there, but, you know, I've always felt that, you know, if there's. It's a different standard, as you pointed out, Jake. It's, it's, okay, you're regulated as a hotel, the Vermont Department of Health is going to come see you. Department of Public Safety is going to come see you. And then there's folks running an Airbnb who don't get a visit from anyone because they're not really regulated. I don't think that's fair. So I think there is, there could be value in the city saying if you are a short-term renter. We have an obligation to folks visiting our city and we want to make sure that you're appropriately registered with the city and that we know what you're doing. And there's a lot of value to other people as well. Public safety comes to mind, you know, and we have that. So that they know that these folks, that if the folks staying there may not necessarily be familiar with the area. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, I think I'd like to, I'd like to see what other municipalities are doing. I know Burlington. Of course, they're different motivation in Burlington. I mean, they're, you know, they've got. I mean, it's really a big industry in Burlington and it's definitely taking away in a big way from their long-term rental market. So I understand, I understand their motivation may be a little bit different, but it doesn't mean that it's any less genuine here.
All points very well made. I, I will say that the provisions that I listed there are all based on. Other ordinances. The Short-Term Rental Association has, if you, you can pull it up on your, your computers when you get home. But they have a list of active ordinances throughout the state, often in ski towns, but not all of them. You know, the, it seems to be more, there seem to be more tension points in ski towns because those are the party houses. Whereas I think we have a lot more business travelers. In, in our Airbnbs, I, I know just within several blocks of me, I can, I know at least. Two homes that are, are sure, serving in short-term rentals. Or three, actually, I know three. So they're around, they're not Airbnb, you know, the listings change from day to day. So if you just look at one stay, you're getting perhaps a small snapshot at any given time. But this, these are standard provisions and ordinances. They're much lighter touch than what Burlington did, which had all types of. Rules about, especially about occupancy and. Lengths of stay and like Woodstock for a while said, well, you could only do, you know, you can only have a short-term rental, but you could only do it. During leaf season for some, you know, so many days a year. So this is a more, I'd say, open market ordinance. While at the same time providing those public safety protections and, and a little bit of licensure revenue for the city.
Hey, I'd be lying if I, if I said I didn't think about it on the eighth. Could be a pretty good gig for one night.
I'm gonna, who hasn't spoken yet, Counsel? I think you both have spoken, so Counselor Wazasek?
Yeah, just quickly, is that, I, I think this is a fine idea. Counselor Booton's point about maybe tying it into the minimum housing ordinance where all the rental stuff is, like, you know, why have two ordinances when you can just have one? That's the only reason, I think that might be a good idea. And then the only like concern in quotes, I had, you know, like. Newsflash is that the minimum housing ordinance is not being enforced throughout this entire city. There are plenty of rental units that are not within. You know, so we know that we have a backlog of code enforcement stuff. We know we have issues within the minimum housing ordinance that aren't being addressed now. So adding even more stuff for them to enforce when we can't get to where we want to be already. You know, just loops back to that we have to resource what we're asking the staff to do, which I know we all know, I just felt compelled to say, as per usual.
I, I will say it is being enforced now. I've definitely, I can guarantee you it's being enforced.
Thank God.
But that, huh? Your license expires shortly. The, yeah, the question that I have is whether or not we should just, and Carol, I'm gonna really make myself look really stupid. We don't, I know, aren't you excited? We do, we don't license hotels and motels.
Nope.
Okay, so what we probably should do is maybe license hotels and motels. And that would automatically fall underneath from that. And then they would have to pay the taxes.
We, we have moved away from.
I know.
Licensing things that are already overseen by the state. That have, I mean, it's the reason we moved away from licensing restaurants. And, you know, though that kind of a, it felt redundant. It was, it took a lot of staff time to do with the inspections and stuff like that. So with regards to hotels, motels, places that are under the, the jurisdiction of the state. You know, it, it feels like that would be redundant, duplicative and burdensome. The places, the short-term rentals are a different animal because at the moment they're flying under the radar. So.
Well, we could.
Again, just in terms of staff impact, there would absolutely be a staff impact in terms of. You know, notification that there's this licensure to take in the payments, to issue the letters each year. But it does not, nothing in the list suggests that there should be an active inspection process. It mentions self-certification. And, and that's a way of a operator assuming a form of liability and if, but there would be potentially. If complaints, complaints occur. Which those complaints are probably already going into either dispatch or. Or the code enforcement office right now, I would suspect, to the extent that there are.
To the extent they are, yeah. Yeah, I think the self-certification would alleviate a lot of the staffing concern and would. Looking at Janet's box on the screen, it means all of it would fall to her world because then they would take code enforcement off the. Table besides, you know, Paul's.
So the Department of Health typically license hotels, motels and restaurants. Do they have the capacity to make meaningful inspections?
Probably not.
I mean, I just have been to a lot of hotels, visiting homeless folks where I thought. Not happening.
I think they just operate on a complaint-based system too.
So much of that stuff was waived during.
Mr. Mayor.
Burn Rose.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to mention that you're looking at Airbnb, but we've gone places and we have. Vacation rentals by owner VRBO and so there are other kinds of things out there. So if you're making your decisions based on what you find on Airbnb, I think it's a really good idea to start looking at those. And having some kind of licensure. It gives us some, you know, like, I think Counselor Lozon said, it gave us, we can have income from that. People are getting services without having any costs from the city. So that's a balancing thing and I like the idea of, of including that also in the ordinances. And then I just heard about the voluntary registration. You know, that's a place to start. So thank you for thinking about this, Mayor.
This needs to percolate.
Yeah.
It's fine, but if, but if we want to get something moving, then it's pretty, pretty, it's pretty tight.
Can we never percolate one week? Because we're meeting next week.
Have you looked at other, any municipalities that, give me, give me the example and I'll, yeah, can I just?
Yeah, so I've looked at Killington's, Burlington's.
Burlington.
Yeah. I'd have to, it's been a six months since I did this, so, but again, the Short-Term Rental Association. They have a page that lists all the municipalities that, and they're doing that from the perspective of protecting the industry.
Yeah.
And keeping tabs on what municipalities are doing, but they have many links to all the ordinances, so.
Give me, yeah, I mean, give me a couple of weeks just to look at it. I, on its face, I don't think it's a poor idea.
Yeah, Counselor Dearing.
Just noticing on the Vermont Short-Term Rental Association page, they have the Model Short-Term Residence Ordinance. Was that where you had pulled that from?
I've looked at that, but I, I developed that list as a customized, what I thought was appropriate to Barry City.
Okay.
Counselor Booton.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering if we throw it into like the rental? Or we throw it into the hotel where we're getting the local options tax?
The short-term accommodations, yeah, would.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right?
We're, we're getting the tax anyway.
Oh, we are?
Yeah. They, they, they pay it as part of the.
It's just an estate that deals with it.
If they're using a platform.
If, yeah.
Yeah, if they, yeah.
So we're, we're looking to charge more, correct? Is that what you're saying? Sorry, not you.
You can only charge the tax rate that we've established.
No, no, I think, yeah, what, what the mayor is suggesting is some kind of a self-certification fee.
That we're not charging hotels.
Like an annual licensure.
Okay. That feels a little weird because, because we're not doing that to the hotels. But now we're going to do it to.
Well, but we are doing it to rentals, like there's a rental fee.
But they're not being charged local options tax.
Correct. No, but it's the, it's the users that are paying the local option tax, not the property owners.
I mean, I'd love to get Dave Rue working on this right away, but I recognize this is a big, big thing.
No such thing as right away with Dave Rue.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I think there, even though generally I'll cringe a little bit at registries, you know, there is value. When you got a small city. I think most people who are guests at an Airbnb. I think generally like most hotel guests are well-behaved. But if my next-door neighbor would have bought, if someone bought a home next to me and wanted to turn it into a 365-day-a-year Airbnb. I'd kind of want to know. And if the city had some sort of registry, at least you could know. And right now, you have zero idea. So I think the idea, the thought of licensing, which is unique to municipalities rather than. You know, we can license things. So I think the idea of licensing. These types of short-term rentals within the city isn't necessarily a bad idea. Again, I just need to, so charging them an extra, you know, I mean. Long-term landlords are paying their property taxes as our short-term, so. I mean, this fee's for everything, Michael. And as long as we keep them reasonable and there's a, there's a public purpose about it, and I think there is benefit to knowing who is renting short-term. I wouldn't necessarily have an issue with it.
And whatever the fees will be paltry compared to what.
Whatever, 50 bucks a year and as you pointed out, Jake, I've always been fascinated by it. I've never done it. Because I do understand that you can take an apartment, furnish it. And all of a sudden, instead of getting a thousand dollars a month rent, you're getting $3,000 a month rent. So like I said, never done it, always been fascinated by it. I think there's value in knowing who's doing it.
I think we toyed with this a couple of years ago.
This is a new enabling statute from.
Yeah, but I think we toyed with it like. Six, eight years ago, we, we discussed this. Yeah, but I think we toyed with it, like, six, eight years ago, we, we discussed this. Yeah, trust me. I think that it would, I would much rather have it, instead of having a separate ordinance, like somewhere in our ordinance. But we could.
Like in the code of ordinances?
Yeah, somewhere in there, probably under the licensure area. We do it.
All right, so if we can close this out, uh, really, Minier?
So I just, I want to mention that, um, currently there are thirty-six rooms for rent, furnished rooms in the rent, in the Berry City area alone, right now on Furnish Finders. And I put in a budget of sixteen hundred a month. That was the made-up budget. It's for nurses and professionals, Blue Crescent, Blue Shield, National Life, where they can, they literally just rent a room and they have some use of the kitchen and, and other parts of the, of, of the house. So there are definitely other means of these properties being listed, um, than just on Airbnb. And Furnish Finder is a huge one. And so if you have three bedrooms in your house that are available, or two, it's a great way to make quite a bit of extra money. So just, just know that there are definitely more than, um, there's more than one place that does these sort of short-term rentals. And currently, right now, in the city, there are, um, thirty-six open. And that was me saying I want to check in on April fifth. So just, just keep it in mind.
Thank you. All right. So who wants to be bold? Who wants to act and get this moving?
I'll do it. I mean, curiosity killed the cat.
I missed it.
Wasn't there a motion? No?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Always testing my sanity.
Just want to be, you figured it was about six hundred bucks?
Well, you know, it, that was, that was my guess. I figured that there are, there's been enough municipal work on this that Dave should be able to just, uh, peruse provisions and, and draw it together pretty fast. So I thought it's under five hours of work, so.
Yep. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing's seen none. All those in favor of, of moving the proposal as presented?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? As have the motion carries. That takes us to an authorization of the manager to issue an LOI for redevelopment of the Campbell parking lot. This is the, uh, parking lot adjacent to the Seminary Lot, parking lot. It's kind of tucked behind that, in between that, uh, is it what, my street, the courthouse, this little side courthouse street?
It's actually Campbell Street is the, the street that abuts it.
After the publication of the agenda, um, Carol and I conferred, and we proposed two additional sites as well. Uh, one is the Plain Street parking lot, and then the other was some vacant lots off Merchant, Clary Street. They were all overheads, were included of, um, of all the sites there. Some may be more compelling than others, but we figured if we're doing LOIs, might as well see what's out there. Oh, you're doing a letter, so request or proposal, letter of, letter of interest, all right, I'm sorry. Whenever I see LOI, it's a letter of intent for me.
Yeah, this is similar to the seminary.
Sorry about that.
What is it? Oh, interest, oh.
Letter of interest, not letter of intent.
I also thought.
Like, intent with who?
So proposals the, um, the street adjacent to the odd.
It's on the backside of the odd.
And then Clary is a paper street, part of it's a paper street.
Part of it.
And Merchant, uh, there's some vacant land up there that's city-owned and that then might be a little bit different than a parking lot and.
It's about three quarters of an acre, when you string them together. I mean, it's fair, fairly narrow, but, you know, I had this image of, you know, a group of townhouses with an area for green space. And, you know, it's, it's not twenty-eight to thirty units like Seminary Street, but it could be, you know, six units in a green space and.
It's time for Carol's maps.
I, I was having fun.
I don't, I don't mind making a motion to get the letter of interest, um, for those properties. I do want to say that I'm a little leery on Plain Street. Just because there's people that rely on that for parking. Granted, people obviously use Campbell, Campbell.
If they do, they are not buying the permits they're supposed to be buying.
No.
On Plain Street?
No.
It's not me.
I will second Michael's motion.
Let's be a little bit beyond Dee's route, uh, during the evening hours, so. All right, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, no, Council.
Any further discussion? Hearing's seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Then we have discussion of charter changes, uh, with, from Counselor Stockwell and Sean Bell.
All right, we deferred that one.
I don't know, who wants to kick this off?
Um, Council Lowes on is the one up on the substantial improvement or?
Oh, that, that got deferred because the Planning Commission has to, uh, propose that.
So we're, we've moved on to Dee.
So that's basically been referred to the Planning Commission.
Mayor, if I could just make like a technical, there was a question at the beginning of the meeting about the separating clerk treasurer duties. The changes in purple are the ones that would accomplish that. And they're interval with this, with some of the other areas that were being amended.
And I will say that, that I, I'm the one who pulled together the, the possible language associated with clerk and treasurers, and it has not yet been vetted by the city attorney, so.
So I'm just scrolling through the three, three different sections, I think, that are amended, um, related to that change. Does anyone object to the, so, through around the idea of the, a future city council appointing the treasurer's position? I think clerk, both positions are challenging. The position of treasurer probably requires a little different skillset. It's one that Carol cultivated over years, and she agrees with me that, you would be more likely to find someone who could fill the role of clerk in today's current employment environment than you would someone who could fill the role of treasurer. And with the role of treasurer comes, well, both jobs are very serious jobs and have ramifications, but treasurer has that sort of skillset. So my thought was, separate the position of treasurer, treasurer, make that appointed by the council. If the voters happen to elect someone who is qualified in both respects, council could appoint this, say, if someone was elected clerk, council could appoint them treasurer. If council was not comfortable doing that, council could appoint Don Treasurer.
No.
Uh, council could, could appoint Carol Treasurer, even if she wasn't clerk, or even if she was. So I, I, I think it just, you know, as long as politics doesn't take hold and people are, you know, true in their motives, I think it's just something that, that could serve the city well and give future councils a little bit of flexibility to ensure that an important position like treasurer was being, not that they're not both important, but an important position like treasurer was being filled with, filled by someone who was qualified.
Right, Council Booten.
Yeah, and I'll stump for, um, moving the town meeting days to May. And that's to make it easier for budgeting and, you know, it also gives us an idea of what's happening with the state legislature as well. I know it's.
So proud of you.
What do you mean? What do you, what do you mean?
So again, this.
No, this is, this.
Just a pre-hearing discussion.
Right, because, because the hearing is really, the ship has pretty much sailed, which is why this is, this is the opportunity to make changes and to have the substantive discussion.
I'm going to speak for youth, oh, are you done? I'm going to speak for Berry City resident youth ages sixteen and seventeen to have a, the right to vote in local elections, which I think would increase youth participation. And it's my hope that the civics class of Spalding would have a better connection to the city council and we could invite youth here.
Council Wozzazak.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this one, uh, mostly I'm very interested to see what the voters say about this one. I think that there are a lot of really valid, uh, really valid reasons to do it. I think that folks have concerns that are also valid. I fall down on the yay side of this one, but I think that we should just send it to the voters and.
The youth vote.
Okay. Sorry, the youth vote. Um, I thought we had moved on from.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I, I say, send it to the voters, um, get their feel on this. Cause, you know, even once it passes here, it has a bunch of other steps to go through in the legislature, as we saw with our previous charter changes, so. Uh, I think, I think it's a really, I think it's a really interesting question. I, depending on the day, I've fallen on either side of this one. I can say, you know, I started paying my own rent and my own bills when I was fifteen years old, when my mom kicked me out. So I was paying my taxes, you know, I was paying a lot of attention to folks who were making decisions for me. Uh, so, you know, I think that I've also met, now I'm in my late twenties, I've also met a lot of teenagers that have their shit together a lot better than folks who are my age. Uh, so, yeah, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of valid questions, but I think there's a lot of merit here too. And I'm interested to see what the voters have to say.
Jaquan Johnson? I see you have your hand raised on, online, Jaquan?
Yeah, sorry about that. I was muted. I apologize. Um, I would just like to say, as a, um, as a seventeen-year-old, uh, myself, I do feel as that, um, we are very, um, easily persuaded not to do much research behind what we're told as much as some other people would. So, you know, that sixteen to seventeen-year-old Adrian, you're also, you know, very shadowed by your parents, I would say, to kind of do what they want you to do. So like, you know, if you're in a house full of Republicans and you haven't quite, you know, went there yet, you know, they're gonna be, oh, just vote Republican, you're fine. But like, you know, they won't really encourage you to pers, like, go your own path, so to speak. So I feel like maybe if, you know, I feel like just it's too young to maybe, you know, make it, you know, local elections fair because, uh, you know, a house with one registered voter can turn into three, and that's, you know, that can make a big difference sometimes.
Nicholas, you. Oh, okay. It comes for doing.
As a father of five children, I, I kind of feel like this starts to weaponize children. That what we do is the, the things that we talk about in our houses are then portrayed out in our communities. And if the discussions really aren't had, and children are just told to do as I say, and this is what you're going to do, I know a lot of children are gonna vote exactly how their parents do. That's something that I did for a good portion of my life. And I find that, that unfortunately, they're, they're very easily persuaded. And unfortunately, they're, they're a lot of times not able to make some of those hard decisions when it comes to objectively thinking about things, that what mom and dad or whoever is at home says is always the right thing. And as we've come to find, that, that's not always the case. So I think that letting children be children and let them grow and mature in the ways that they need to, to be involved in our community is really important, to have them on our committees and to invite them into council would be great. To have the artwork has been great. But to say that this is an opportunity to involve our youth, uh, I think is misguided in that there are many more opportunities that we can involve our youth in the community than to employ them by voting sixteen or seventeen.
Thank you, Council Dearing, Council Booten.
All right, so for process, Carol. So this, do you, we need a motion to put this forward for a warning?
Not now.
Not now. Okay. Okay, so I definitely think we should probably run the, the, um, the clerk part, the treasurer and clerk by the, the attorney. And since there's no motion needed, um, I will say that our legislature should do their job and remove the school district language. But Carol's been fighting that for how long?
Since twenty nineteen, since we voted to merge.
Yeah, and I can withdraw mine, because I'm, I'm going to organize a writing campaign for Carol's office for clerk treasurer, so, so it's gonna be fine. It's gonna buy, buy everybody a few years.
She just wrote Counselor Lowes on deceased.
I thought it was like, must find another voter named Carol. So on the, um, so just, uh, my feedback, the, the only proposal that really gives me, um, raises a lot of questions for me is moving the town meeting day. Because town meeting day is a, a state holiday in the state of Vermont. It's a day that people get off work, uh, to participate in local elections. It's set as the first Tuesday of March. It's been that way, uh, uh, for hundreds of years. It brings us into, uh, into concert with most municipalities around the state. And, uh, and the town meeting day news cycles. I'm very concerned that off-cycle elections, uh, uh, make it, uh, suppress voter turnout and you get less of an indication of what people actually think. Because, just like this year, we're still holding an election in, uh, March, and then we're holding an election in May. Elections, um, are labor-intensive, they're costly, uh, to run. And, uh, and I would like to see us hold elections when, on the, on a normal cycle, when people have a day off work and are more likely to be able to participate and, and turn out. And I know not everybody's off work, but it is a, it is a state holiday. I also think it compresses the turnaround time for failed budgets, um, which, uh, pressurizes the council to come up with a, a solution be, before fiscal year. And so for all those reasons, I would not support putting this on, on the ballot. I'm particularly the, like, the voter, so, voter suppression, all these little special elections, I think, uh, make it harder to vote, more confusing to vote. And I, and I think we should be making it easier to vote, so, and more routine, and by bundling in clusters. So that's where I stand on that. The others I, I support, and would support a separately-elected treasurer too, if that, um, if that's easy as well, so. Solves an issue as well. All right, if we're ready to close this discussion, then, um, then that takes us to a second reading of the warned, uh, ordinance for police modernization.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing's seen none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Upcoming business, um, Nicholas.
Another crack at the budget, um, we'll have, um, some, potentially some follow-up items on the housing front. Um, and that's all I have at the moment for the second.
One thing that I, I would like to propose is just a, a little bit of a, uh, perhaps conversation or direction with the Planning Commission, just an update on where they are with the zoning amendments and, uh, the meeting frequency. That way we can get that flood hazard, uh, thing turned around as quickly as possible, uh, with what, uh, with some of the other projects that they're nailing on. And then I did want to have a discussion about, um, the use of ARPA funds for water and sewer investment. Uh, and I know we've applied some funding to the water and wastewater enterprise. And I was wondering if there's a way to retroactively apply those as loans from, whether, whether it be the general fund or the ARPA fund to the enterprise? Because, um, by, by giving that, even if it's low interest or no interest, by giving that money into the water wastewater enterprise, we're subsidizing ratepayers in Berry Town, in our service territory, who otherwise, um, are not contributing in an equal measure as ratepayers. So, but if you build it in as a loan, then it becomes a ratepayer obligation that both, both, both municipalities have an obligation to pitch in through the fees that they pay, uh, to pay that back. And I know we've applied some money, and we may apply more money, uh, of, to capital investments. And, um, and I, I know there's probably accounting questions about, is that a legal thing to do? So I was wondering if we could get an answer on that and then talk about, um, just changing the way that money flows between the two funds. Since, on the one hand, it's money of taxpayers, and then on the other hand, it's money of ratepayers, so. Anything else for upcoming items? Council Dearing?
Uh, so I'm gonna be working with Rick Taft on, uh, figuring out a charge for the Jedi B in relation to the ADA committee. Uh, that was something that was talked about at their last, uh, meeting, uh, that they would like a charge from council, about the ADA, uh, aspect for that. They were very concerned. uh, about the ADA, uh, aspect for that. They were very concerned, uh, with some of those things. So, uh, I, uh, volunteered to take it on with Rick. Um, so that's something that we'll be bringing to you guys.
Awesome. Thanks. Anything else?
Um, like one more crack. I, like I said, I presented four ideas to the council last week about housing. One of them was a TIF district in the north end and these are, uh, one was, uh, tax anticipation program. Uh, one was the ability to do tax stabilization within our TIF district. I think, Mary, I think you misunderstood. Uh, what my proposal would do is hold our TIF district harmless, um, you know, for those tax stabilization agreements. What I'm basically looking to do is give Berry City tools that no one else has because we need that competitive advantage. And in order to do that, uh, like I said, it was very well received in the legislature and by the administration. I think next week, Nicholas, we're gonna hear about the governor's five-year freeze plan. You know, the ten-year program that I'm proposing just takes that, makes it very, very specific and puts it on steroids. Uh, but the only way we're going to, and it's not, y- you know, crossover isn't a brick wall. It's really an administrative thing. Crazy things happen in the legislature in the closing days of the legislature. And I wouldn't be surprised if the council got behind one or two or all of these ideas that we couldn't make one ha- make, uh, one of these ideas happen, um, in the closing day of the legislature.
So again, that's an extension of the TIF district.
Yeah, I'll, I'll resend it to you.
Stabilization, hold harmless, the anticipation and the anticipation, three things, right? What's the fourth thing?
Freeze, five-year freeze.
What's that?
Freeze is the governor's plan.
Correct.
So general tax stabilization.
The last time the legislative folks came through, looking at the north end, what they were recommending was a neighborhood development area because it would offer a lot of advantages for rebuilding. And that seems an idea also worth exploring.
Yeah, that's an application, not a specific legislative. So.
But if we applied.
We could do that. We could certainly do that as well, but that's an application, not a legislative act. That's why, what I was doing is prioritizing the things that we can't do on our own.
Bring a resolution.
It'll just be a letter. It'll just be a draft letter.
Right. So if there's no other, uh, flags for upcoming business, that takes us to roundtable. Um, would anyone like to start?
Start off.
Counselor Dearing?
Uh, humbled to have gotten, uh, gotten a certification this morning, uh, from Berry City Elementary, being, uh, honored as staff of the week last week.
Oh, congrats.
So, uh, because of my smile and my engaging, uh, environment, I give out, they were happy to give that away to me. So.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor Sean Bo. Counselor Boone.
A more stunning smile.
There you do.
Counselor Wazizai?
Uh, myself, a couple of my friends and a couple of the legislature's finest went to Shamrocks and Headlocks at the Berry Elks. Never been to a WWE event or Green Mountain Wrestling event in my life. Don't know if I'll ever go again. It was a hell of a lot of fun and Cletus did great.
Third cuss.
Counselor Stockwell?
Um, I went to a rally for the Central Vermont Healthcare United workers and it was really exciting to hear them the work that they have made in getting a livable wage. That just is a win for our, our community and for every individual who serves us at the hospital and for people who are trying to afford a department here. So that seemed great.
Counselor Lowe's on.
Nicholas, I'm pretty sure that the South Main air street light is a major contributor to global warming. That, you know, I, I'll work later this time of year. And it's just frustrating to come through and, and sit, and I sit, and I watch the walk lights flash at eleven fifteen at night. And I watch the other la- walk light flash and I watch, where no one, is there anything we can do to, to upgrade that light, especially with, with Wes Patterson being closed?
Yeah, let me, I'm in. We are actually sending TJ DeRose, our, uh, public work superintendent, to get trained on the lights because usually we have to call our contractor in. Um, so that's usually what causes the delays in the, in the streetlight maintenance. But let me see if, um, if we don't have planned work. I know TJ's gonna have some training and he'll be able to do all that stuff in-house.
Yeah, I know that, I know there's an issue with that signal that it's old, it's deferred, but holy cow.
Well, I feel, I feel the pain there.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, sometimes, you know, sometimes we're all deaf. It would be a tragedy if we were all blind and deaf. So yes, you're, you're welcome for the glasses and make sure you, make sure you use them if you're out there looking at the sun. They do work.
Right. You're polite. It's amazing.
Excuse me. Hi. I don't know how to put my hand up. There we go. I, I just want to say that there's nothing wrong with being blind or deaf and, and, um, I know that you didn't mean that badly, Counselor Lowe's on. But to some people, that would be highly offensive. Just saying.
Have a good evening, Byrne.
All right, and, uh, I'll pass as well. So that takes us to the executive session on negotiations. Is there a motion for findings?
So moved.
There's a motion by Counselor Stockwell, second by Counselor Dearing. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to enter executive session at five till nine?
So moved.
I'm conflicted out.
And, and invite, uh, who are we inviting?
And Carol.
Manager, assessor, and Carol. And Tom, you're sitting this one out, right?
Yep, I am conflicted out of this. I get to go home.
Lifetime experience.
Good night. Hey, Tom. Oh, I'll do the break over next.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
I saw it in, uh, two thousand seventeen or something like that. It is. If you're not planning on being there, you need to.
Mirror-like finish than the ones I got.
So whatever you're planning on.